I would like to call the Lancaster Central School District Board of Education meeting to order. In the unlikely event of an emergency, if we have to evacuate the room, please note the location of the exits. At this time, I ask you to silence your cellphones and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, and please remain standing afterwards. And tonight, we remain standing for Robert Laney, a former fire code inspector for the district who passed away on September 5th, 2018. Thank you, everyone. So we move on to 4.0, which are presentations. We have several different presentations for this evening. 4.1, we'll start with our audit presentation. We have Tom and Carl from Drescher and Malecki. We'll turn it over to you gentlemen. Should we take seats in the front row? Or are you just... Do you have a presentation appearing up here?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll take a seat in the front row then. Good to go? I'm assuming this is on? Alright. I'm Tom Malecki. I'm the office managing partner of Drescher and Malecki, which are the independent auditors for the school district. I have with me Carl Widmer, who is a senior manager with our organization and one of the key people within our audit process. I think, you know, the one word I used there was independent auditors. And, you know, for the purpose of this meeting, while we are hired by the district, we work for the federal government, the state government, the taxpayers of the town, as well as the investors of the bonds of the Lancaster Central School District. Management prepares financial statements on a regular basis. They prepare a balance sheet, they prepare a statement of operations for the last 12 months. It's our burden to come up with audit procedures to present whether or not those financial statements fairly present your operations and your balances as of June 30th, 2018. To do that, you know, it's a rather, you know, significant process in that we come in here, gain an understanding of all the internal controls here. That means we interview, we draw narratives, and then we go back and we walk through those processes. From there, we gather as a group to develop audit procedures that will get us to our ultimate objective of opining on those financial statements. This process, the entire process, you know, takes, you know, some $300 hours, and you know, one may ask, well, why? Well, embedded into that process are also some requirements from the federal government. The federal government requires us to look at your major programs of the district. The district receives $3 million of federal aid on an annual basis. So what they're doing is they're saying, "Look at these major programs." And oh, by the way, we need you to select 25 items on each of those major programs, and then there's 14 different attributes that we need you to look at each of those selections. So you're looking at 700 little attributes within the federal program itself. So we look at each one of those. And I'm happy to say that looking at every one of those attributes, there were no exceptions. And we have to write that to the federal government. So that gives you a little bit of background, ultimately, of what we do. We then create our procedures, we perform our procedures, and then ultimately, we give an opinion, which is located in the first pages of the Lancaster Central School District financial statements. And that audit opinion will state that the financial information, the position as of 6:30 18, as well as the operations for the past 12 months, within this document fairly state your position and your operations. So that's ultimately what they would call a clean opinion. So with that, I just want to present a couple slides. You probably, you know, well, products of our audit, what we... what will end up... the basic financial statements, which I talked about. We also will issue a management letter, which will have some observations. Auditor communications, we held those with the audit committee prior to this meeting. There's certain required communications that we must have as the auditors to talk about management, so that, in other words, we're kind of the extra set of eyes for the board to look over management. If management's changing policies, which would influence the numbers, we have a responsibility to tell this board, this audit committee, of those changes. If there's suspected fraud, or areas where we saw fraud, we did not observe any fraud, we would have that responsibility to tell the audit committee. So we will have a letter on those auditor communications, and then we'll also issue a report on the extra classroom activities here. I just want to touch upon, you know, a couple of graphs here, just to give you a flavor for the, you know, the size of the district. You know, you see those lines there, and we've had some real successes in the last few years. This past year, the red line exceeded the blue line. That's not necessarily a bad thing. Over a five-year period, you're trying to get those lines about even. Sometimes they're going to be... the red's going to be above, and sometimes the blue's going to be above. What this shows here is we spent about $4 million more than we brought in. The actual spend in the district in the general fund was $100.7 million this past year, and the actual revenues that were brought in was 96.2. First glance, you say, "Oh, we spent more." But that was actually a planned use by the board. If you recall, there was a vote on a $2.5 million use of reserves for capital projects. There was a vote on bus transportation of $900,000. And then additionally, the board elected, through a resolution, to transfer from an unemployment reserve, which was overfunded, to pay down some of its debt. So that kind of explains the rationale for why they spent more in 2018 than they brought in. Where we're at right now, this is your on-assign fund balance. This number, by the way, by state law, cannot exceed 4%. You'll see in towns and in counties and villages, that number sometimes goes anywhere between 16 and 40% in some of the towns and villages in the area. The state mandates that we can't go over 4%, but you can see that it's been a very consistent, stable story to tell here in the Lancaster Central School District. Overall, I talked about the $4 million that we spent in excess of our revenues. You can see that trends to our total reserves here. Our total reserves dropped to about $36 million, but that's still healthier than where the district was five years ago. So overall, you're in a very stable financial position. Just to touch on a couple of observations, you know, first of all, you know, we talk about our independence, but we also have to get information from the business office, and we receive full cooperation from the business office throughout the audit. And not just the business office, every one of the departments that we had to talk to within the district. We did provide some adjusting journal entries, which were provided to the audit committee in their letter, and we anticipate that we will conclude by issuing our reports to the district tomorrow upon their approval of the board. If there's any questions from the board, I'd be happy to address them. If not, that concludes the presentation.
If you looked on the agenda, this is an action item that as a board we should... if there is any discussion, we can vote on it, but to approve the findings of the audit committee, which I fully recommend and endorse, as the audit committee met from about 6:00 to 6:45 today. So can I have a motion to accept the audit committee's findings? Any discussion? All vote in favor? Those opposed? So moved?
And before we go further, I just want to point out that Mr. Jackson has been excused for the meeting this evening. He's traveling with work. So gentlemen, we thank you for your presentation this evening. So next, 4.2, we have a school board recognition presentation.
Well, good evening, and welcome to Lancaster Middle School. Today is October 1st, and the beginning of New York State's School Board Recognition Month. When each of you took the oath as a school board member for the first time, I am sure you did not realize the enormity of the commitment to your board seat. I'm sure you... the giving of the time to the board between board meetings, work sessions, retreats, attending conferences, studying new regulations, and numerous school functions. In addition of giving of your time, you also sacrificed time with family, friends, and personal events that you cannot attend due to board functions. Many people ask, "Why do you do this? Why sacrifice so much for so little in return?" I would venture to say it's your sense of service in giving back to this community to make it a better place. You recognize the best way to improve Lancaster is through a strong and reliable educational system. As a board, you work to set policy and guide our schools. Sometimes, there are difficult conversations, but you make informed decisions with the best information you have at the time. It can be a thankless job until you walk into one of our schools and see the magic happening in the classrooms. That is where your collective efforts, the late evenings, the countless meetings, all pay off. The families of Lancaster, along with our students, administrators, and teachers, say thank you for your service and your support. At this time, it's my privilege to introduce the assistant principal at the middle school, Mr. Bendeman, who has been working with building administrators at every level, and will share a few tokens of our appreciation with you at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Krasinski. Good evening, everyone. A couple things. As an employee of this district, as a community member, and as a father of three young children who go to Lancaster schools, I have a firsthand opportunity to look and see the opportunities that are presented to our kids. These opportunities would not be possible without the hard work, dedication, and commitment to children that you, the board, demonstrate time and time again. This evening, we have some very special guests representing each of our buildings that have come out to today's meeting to talk about the impact of your work on their experiences here in Lancaster. Each of the trustees will be presented with a few items to thank you for your service to our students, including this keepsake. So it's designed and created by Mrs. Melanie Berry and our fantastic art department. The Lancaster L decorated with pictures of students from across the district engaged in board-supported activities. So at this time, I'd like to introduce the real stars of our presentation. Our first guests of the evening will be from Hillview, and those are Abby Domeno and Alexa Lariga.
Hello, I'm Abby Domeno.
And I'm Alexa Lariga.
And we are both third graders at Hillview Elementary School.
We are thankful to have very supportive and caring board of education members in Lancaster.
We appreciate how you all support our academic programs, our athletic programs, and our arts programs in our amazing school district.
We love Lancaster!
Where do we put it?
This is for Mr. Ute.
Good job. Okay. We are up next. We are from Como Park Elementary School, and with me, I have Isaac Medbury and Lorelei Smith.
We would like to thank the Lancaster Board of Education for hiring all the good staff that have helped us become better people with amazing character. All of our teachers have big hearts and make learning fun. For example, the lunch ladies make us amazing food. The art teacher does fun projects like tissue box monsters. And our teachers give us special privileges, but only if we earn it.
Thank you for giving us wonderful buses and bus drivers. They take us home safely every day. Thank you for giving us flags so that we could say the pledge of allegiance every day. Also, thank you for all the supplies you give us, like our tables, chairs, and Chromebooks. You all have very big hearts for doing this, and you don't even get paid. That's awesome!
That's... this is for Mr. Gallagher.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Van Norwick, and I am a third grader at Johnny Sholley Elementary. On behalf of the entire Sholley community, I would like to thank you for volunteering your time to make the Lancaster School District such an amazing place. Thank you for your... thank you for supporting enrichment funds, which are used for after-school clubs at Sholley Elementary. Last year, I participated in the Titanic STEM Club, where we use science, technology, engineering, and math skills to complete activities connected with the book Tonight on the Titanic. We appreciate you supporting great programs like this.
And now, we have Court Street Elementary.
Good evening. I am Peyton Bianco. I am thankful for the Lancaster Board of Education, for our wonderful teachers and the help they give us every day.
I am Brady Newman. I am thankful for the Lancaster Board of Education for the activities we can do outside of school. We would like to thank Mrs. Thatcher for her service to Lancaster community.
I am from William Street. Hello, my name is Jack Mickles. I am a sixth grade student at William Street School. I am very thankful to the board of education for a number of reasons. First, I've had some awesome teachers, not only at William Street School, but also at Como Park Elementary. My teachers have always taught me to try my best, and I'm better... I'm a better student because of that. My favorite subjects are social studies, math, and science. I'm thankful for the many resources we have available that help make learning fun. As I move forward into middle school and high school, I'm really looking forward to playing different sports and participating in various clubs that are offered. None of this would be possible without the support of the board of education. Thank you for continuing to provide students with the opportunities to be successful. Now I'm going to introduce new fourth grader Marissa Kremlis.
My name is Marissa Kremlis, and I'm a fourth grader student in Ms. McNamara's room at William Street School. I would like to thank the Board of Education for always putting kids first and making sure we are safe on the buses and at school. I am thankful I am a student in Lancaster's school district because I am able to plan and instrument. I play the clarinet, and I am also able to sing a fourth grade chorus. Thank you for supporting technology in Lancaster's school district. I am looking forward to participating in STEM classes, as well as Project Through the Way program in fifth grade. I am thankful to each and every one of you for your commitment in my education.
Good evening. I'm Salvador Lima, the student council president, and these are the fellow officers of Lancaster Middle School Student Council. This is Ryan Corcoran, student council vice president, Ally Schlotterbeck, secretary, and David Stroh, treasurer. They will be telling you about all the... they will be telling you about the many opportunities students at LMS are appreciated of, thanks to you.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Ryan Corcoran. I am the vice president of student council. Today, I would like to take a minute to thank you for making leaders at our school by letting there be clubs and after-school activities. I am a part of student council and NJHS. Those are a few of many clubs at our school. I believe that these clubs are a great way for students to express their feelings and become leaders. We, as officers of a club, are very pleased with what our school is turning into. When I walk down the halls, I tend to see more and more leaders, whether it's somebody picking up books for another... for somebody else, or hanging up posters, or even helping a student with their schedule. These are all examples of leadership. Once again, I'm very grateful for all the young leaders that our school is creating, and this is all because of you guys. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Allison Schlotterbeck, and I am an eighth grade student at Lancaster Middle School. I am here tonight to thank the school board for their support of Lancaster Athletics. Here at Lancaster, we have over 1,500 students that participate on 76 athletic teams. The school board approves the annual budget that pays for equipment and uniforms, maintenance of all fields, transportation, and coaches. Members of the school board also attend many of our athletic contests and athletic award nights at the end of our seasons. I myself am a student athlete and appreciate all that the school board does for me and all my fellow student athletes. As a member of soccer, basketball, and track teams, I have learned through athletic competition the values of commitment, hard work, perseverance, and most of all, leadership. Thank you again for providing the student athletes of Lancaster with such great opportunities.
Hello, I'm David, the treasurer of student council, and I would like to take a moment and recognize our fantastic board of education for gifting our school with amazing opportunities such as our accelerated programs. These programs consist of accelerated math for the seventh and eighth graders, along with living environment for the eighth graders. These courses are extraordinarily valuable to those who excel in the standard courses and are able to go above and beyond of what is currently asked of them. And this will continue on at the high school with the vast number of accelerated/advanced placement courses. On behalf of the students in these courses, we thank the board of education for this wonderful opportunity.
On behalf of my fellow officers, we present you with this gift of appreciation. Thank you again for providing all students with a chance to be a part of something amazing, opportunities... to be a part of such amazing opportunities at Lancaster Middle School as we continue our journey of learning.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ryan O'Hara, the student union president at the high school. We would just like to thank you all for your immense support and everything we do at the high school. It is very cool to see the new additions and projects taking place and knowing that others are soon to come. With the incredible amount of clubs and sports at the high school, it gives the student body a chance to find their calling and be a part of something they care about outside of the learning that goes on during the school day. No one person is the same as the next, and the programs that the district has provided changes the thought of school to be more about learning and passion.
Hello, everybody. My name is Ryan Glasser, and I'm the corresponding secretary at Lancaster High School. You allow us to expand our learning on the things we love, whether it be in the community or somewhere else in the world. We have so many opportunities to travel the world, meet new people, or even discover new passions, and without you, that wouldn't be possible. We know that not every school provides all of the opportunities that you provide us, and your effort shows us that you care about our school life, and we again thank you for your hard work to make our last years at Lancaster the best they can be. And Mr. Sage, this is for you.
The final tribute for tonight, for this evening, comes from the district's incomparable music department. So enjoy, and again, to our board members, thank you for your support.
Good evening. My name is Olivia Van Norwick, and I am a third grader at Johnny Sholley Elementary. Because of you, all third grade students throughout the district are able to be a part of course for the first time. We are so excited to learn how to work together as a group and perform for all of our classmates and families. We are able to experience singing in a large group, watching a conductor for the first time, and learning about diction, tone, blending, and breathing to help us perform the best we can. I know the concerts at Sholley will bring memories for years to come. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Imogen Zavala. I want to thank you for your support of music in the Lancaster Central School District. Because of you, I am able to participate in orchestra, allegro club, full orchestra, the Erie County Solo Festival, chorus, select chorus, ukulele club, string ensemble, summer lessons, and the Erie County Orchestra. Because of your support, my friends at William Street School are also able to participate in band, jazz band, flute ensemble, summer orchestra, summer band, all-county chorus, all-county band, and the New York State School Music Association Solo Festival. I love being able to learn a few different instruments and hearing the amazing music that we can produce in just a few years. My mom also plays the violin, and although I really wanted to start to play it, it would have been really difficult for me to take lessons outside of school. In the William Street School music program, it was really easy and fun to learn to play the violin with my friends. I really look forward to all of my school musical experiences during the day, after school, and before school. Thank you. Thank you.
Hi, my name's Gina Smith, and I am the current reigning president of the LMS Drama Club.
My name is Melissa Hi, and I'm an officer assistant for this year's Drama Club here at LMS. I decided to go for this position because Drama Club and music in general means so much to me. Last year was my first ever musical, and if I was having a bad day, whether it was arguments at home or stressful schoolwork, going to rehearsal would make it each and every day better. Singing all the songs and being able to act along was something I'd wanted to do for so long, and having this experience to write at school was amazing. I decided to try out for an officer so I could help bring as much joy to the other kids as Drama Club brought to me. I would never have this opportunity if it wasn't for your support. For this, I share all of my gratitude with the board members who support Drama Club and make it possible.
Music has always been a big part of my life. I have always loved to perform and sing for people, so coming to the middle school and finally having a chance to do that with a big group was fantastic. I was and still am excited and so thankful that we get this opportunity to do a full production at LMS. To me, Drama Club and musicals in general are very important. I think that musicals provide, provide a safe space for people to express themselves through other characters. And you make friends, have a fun time, and get to sing and dance while you're doing it. Who wouldn't love that? Once again, I am so grateful that Lancaster has an amazing music program and supporters that allow us to put on an amazing show. I think that I speak for all of my fellow officers when I say we are all extremely thankful for the Lancaster Drama Department and music programs.
Hi, I'm Jen Carden, and I'm a member of the Carnival Kids Sea Orchestra at Lancaster High School. And I just want to say I am so thankful that you prepare trip, pass our trip so we could know more about sea drum and where it came from. The sea drum is such a unique instrument, and there's nothing else like it in the music department. And it just gives me the opportunity just to be myself at the gigs. We played thirty to forty gigs per summer without rehearsal. And we're so busy kids that, you know, sometimes in the, we take a break with Marchman and we take a break in musical season. But then all the time, it's almost every single Wednesday we're rehearsing, but we're making music, and that's all that matters. Because music is a thing that makes me who I am, and it makes me who I am also, that I want to go in for music. And without CKSO, I can't imagine my life without it.
Hello, my name is Patrick Murphy, and I'm currently serving as one of the drum majors of the Lancaster High School Marching Legends. As I speak, the Marching Legends are working tirelessly at the high school to perfect and clean their show entitled Path of Totality. It is centered around the themes of a solar eclipse includes musical selections from Beethoven Symphony Number Seven, Clair de Lune, and selections from Total Eclipse of the Heart. Being a part of this amazing organization has shaped and made me the person who I am today. I started five years ago on my first show called Tropic. I was a scared eighth grader at first, but then warmed up to the kids in the high school very quickly. They were outstanding role models, and I looked up to them throughout my marching band years. Some of them have become lifelong friends I still talk with today. I still remember when I came to school on my first day of states and saw my locker decorated to the nines by my section leader. Man, did it give the clarinets a run for their money. I will also never forget my rookie year when I asked the acting drum major Cole Johnson if I could have a ride in the golf cart. Because hey, riding in a golf cart when you're in eighth grade is pretty cool. He told me to meet him after practice. Three hours later, I sure got a ride in that golf cart. It was really fun. Now five years later, I'm standing in his shoes, and yes, I still get rides in that golf cart from time to time. The, this organization is what I would consider my home away from home. I enjoy the students, staff, and directors that make this band a family. Also our amazing parent volunteers who do everything from serve us hot meals to build massive props for us to use. Coming up, we will performing at the Carrier Dome at our state's competition. And be taking a trip to Boston where on Saturday, we will drive to the MetLife Stadium to perform in a national competition. This band is truly something unique to Lancaster, and I'm proud to lead them on the field in competitions. None of this would never be possible without the amazing school board we have in front of us right now. On behalf of the Marching Legends, I would like to thank you for your continued support. This organization would not be possible without the continued support from our loving community and school board. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Abigail Brudes, a senior at Lancaster High School, and I'm a proud member of our school's choir program. Throughout my years at Lancaster High, I have been a part of many musical groups and ensembles that have given me many unique experiences and opened new doors for me, helping me to grow as a musician. Being a part of the choir program has taught me to work to high standards in order to achieve the best o- outcome, and also helped me become more versed in different genres of music. I am also serving as the Performing Arts Society President, in which I help to organize the logistics of the school musical. Being in a leadership position has helped me learn how to balance duties with doing what I love most, performing for others. In addition, the past two years, I have been invited to the Eastman School of Music to attend the New York State School Music Association All-State Conference to sing in the Mix and Trouble choirs alongside some of the best vocalists in the state. During my stay, I was able to learn new vocal techniques that I was able to bring back to LHS and apply to my ever, everyday singing. On behalf of every student who sings in the Lancaster High School Choir Program, I would like to thank you, the Lancaster Board of Education, for your continuing support of not only the choir program, but of all the music programs at our school. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Emma Naspie, and I am a senior at Lancaster High School. Since two thousand and sixteen, I have been a part of the performing side of our school's Academy of the Visual and Performing Arts. Since getting inducted during the spring of my freshman year, the Arts Academy has given nothing but once-in-a-lifetime opportunities for all of us. From going backstage at the Buffalo Philharmonic to having our arts showcased at citywide events, none of our artists would be where we are today if it weren't for this academy. We also have the opportunity to intern and job shadow all over the Western New York area. During my junior year, I shadowed Aaron McGary, a music therapist at Buffalo Hearing and Speech, and I had the opportunity to use music to help children with autism develop learning and social skills. Not every student at Lancaster High School gets the opportunity to shadow or intern at a job related to their passion. Being a part of any academy at LHS allows you to do this. Our courses have not only taught us all more about our passion for the arts, but they have given us a better appreciation for the arts. After scoring a five on my AP Music Theory exam, I now understand the basic concepts of creating music and why a certain song could be an earworm for us. Even though I have chosen not to go to school for music next fall, I know that I will be involved in many extracurriculars related to music on campus, and music will always have a special place in my heart. Not only have I found a love for music, but I have also found a love for the people I'm surrounded with every day in fourth period. My fellow seniors have taught me so many things, and I'm grateful to call these individuals my brothers and sisters. Being a part of any performance ensemble, regardless if you're in the academy or not, has helped everyone in the Lancaster Music Department gain confidence. Being in a performance ensemble has made us better public speakers and comfortable with s- with speaking to adults, whether it be a teacher, boss, or other authority figures. These qualities will definitely help us after high school, as we are on our own and we have to approach new people. Having the level of confidence we all have now puts us ahead of other students to take on the real world after high school. If it weren't for our talented music faculty at Lancaster High School, we wouldn't be ready to take on the next chapter of our lives with the life lessons that we have learned. So on behalf of the Lancaster Academy of the Visual and Performing Arts, I would like to say thank you to you, the Lancaster Board of Education, for continuing to support this academy and our schools art and music departments. We have had great opportunities to learn about the arts, and we have learned how to be mature, confident, and responsible young adults. Thank you.
These young men and women and the opportunities that you've given them, this is the fruits of your labor. Thank you very much and appreciate your support.
So I am so impressed, I'm just speechless. I, I loved listening to you, young, young ladies and gentlemen, and even though you're showing us gratitude, um, I am filled with gratitude myself just for being on the same team that you're on, so. Um, I know that I, I, uh, the board shares my opinion. Um, schools, our Lancaster schools are wonderful places because of the children that are here, right? Um, I'm a teacher myself, and when I go to school in the summertime and I just see adults, it's boring, it really is. Um, and when the, the school starts to fill up with children, that's what it's all about. And how brave are you to stand up here and do those speeches? So I'd like to, to start another round of applause for all those speeches. That's funny. I, I think, um, you know, sometimes standing ovations are overdone, right? But that was well deserved and, and absolutely. Um, so I'm going to finish with, with this. Um, we have a meeting that's going on now. You shouldn't have to stay for that because you probably have homework to do and, um, and bedtime. But I always say, you know, when you do something that great, like parents should probably take it for ice cream or something after this, right? Absolutely. So with that, I thank you very much for the, again, for those presentations. Okay, so moving on, we'll go to four point three, which is our two thousand eighteen nineteen art show with Mrs. Mariani.
Good evening, board, and good evening, parents and administrators and students. My name is, uh, Mrs. Mariani. I'm the Art Department Chair K through twelve. For the past seven or eight years, we have been so fortunate to have such a phenomenal board and administration team here at Lancaster. I've always had the privilege to feel very important that this district loves art. Art has been an extremely important venue in your children's lives. They come to school every day excited about coming to their art classes, as you know, when they get home. So a few years back, the board said that we'd love to give those students their own show in our boardroom, which is now held at Central Avenue School. So tonight, your sons and daughters are going to receive this beautiful certificate with the, um, president, Mr. Patrick Uteg, name on it, and myself, Mrs. Mariani, as the department chair. I hope that you will treasure this beautiful certificate in your portfolios. And also, your artwork is here tonight. It has been professionally matted for you. It will go into a beautiful frame on a wall in Central Avenue School, uh, in the boardroom. And you may, um, come at any time to see it. I guess you might have to call the office first to make sure that the boardroom is available to see it first. So we are going to, um, have you come up on the stage and hold your own artwork. And so when I call your name, starting from kindergarten to twelfth grade, if you are here, you can come up on the stage. If you want to come with your parents, you can. If you're a little nervous, if not, come on by yourself. And you will get the work, your work from, um, Mr. Uteg first, and shake his hand, and also our other board member, shake his hand. You don't have to shake mine if you're too nervous. And I'm going to have you come across the stage and stand from kindergarten to the last person here on stage and show your work out in front. Thank you. Um, if I mess up your names, please don't throw any tomatoes at me. Okay, our kindergartner is Graham McLaughlin. Is that correct? Oh, come on up, sweetie. Yay! Wow, kindergarten up on his own, that is so cool. Really, look at this artwork. Isn't this amazing? Yeah, when I was trying to find the order of the kids, I did not believe that that was kindergarten. That's amazing. I'll see you in high school soon. Next one is Grace, um, Hansberger. If Grace is here, she's a first grader. Congratulations, sweetheart. Beautiful work. Congratulations. Okay, and then this is yours, and if you can hold it up just like Graham. And our second grader is Cooper Maka. Cooper here tonight. Yay, here comes Cooper. Love your name. Come on down with the other. Sophie Bider. I hope I said that right, Sophie. Third grader. Come on down, sweetheart. Beautiful dress, Sophie. Beautiful. Come on down. There she is, Statue of Liberty. Beautiful. Isabella Binderman, fourth grade. Come on over here, sweetheart. Here's your certificate. Beautiful dress. These children are beautifully dressed tonight. Allison Farmer. She's a fifth grader. Um, Mazara Pizzario, did I spell, say that right? Mariah, I'm so sorry. You spell it differently than I'm used to. Sorry, Mariah. There's a beautiful spelling of your name. I love it. Fifth grader. Congratulations, honey. Allison Minco, seventh grader. Look at that, move down, boys. Uh, Tyler Walker, eighth grade. Yay, Tyler. That's an awesome design. You gotta take, you know, art. That is amazing. Stay in the high school, take art, plenty of it. We've got lots of courses. Jaden Hafner, ninth grader. Jaden is now in my drawing and painting class and doing phenomenally well. She's also in the, uh, academy. She's in our Academy of Visual and Performing Arts. Congratulations, sweetie. Molly Fowler, 10th grader? I had Molly last year in drawing and painting, she's now in portfolio class getting ready to do her breaths for her AP concentrations. And as you can see, that is her! Self-portrait. Come on over to my eyes. Jennifer Rybacki, am I saying that right? Rybacki? With Jennifer tonight? Okay, I'll get that to her. That's her piece here. Delaney, drawing? I always had a problem with her name, even last year I used to say it wrong. She is now in college. So she was a 12th grader last year, and now this is her work here, and now she is in college, so I didn't expect to see her tonight. I want to congratulate all of you. We had almost everyone here tonight, we rarely get the kids off to college, but this is fantastic that you're all here, and I want to thank you, parents, for bringing them here tonight, because this is a big deal to be up here, and I've been an art major all my life since kindergarten myself, and if I'd had a word like this, I don't know, I would've been in awe for the rest of my life. So, congratulations, and thank you again, Board, and Dr. Valley, please, thank you so much, because if it wasn't for the Board and our amazing administrators, this would not happen. And thank you, administrators, for all the support in the arts in your buildings, thank you very much.
So, did every parent get a picture, that they wanted to get a picture, everybody? If you'd like to come up and take a picture? Be shameless, shameless. Come on up. Thank you to our talented young ladies and gentlemen from Lancaster schools, and keep up the great work, and we hope to see you here again for the next art show. You can make your way down here if you'd like. Next, 4.4, we have a tenure recognition for one of our staff, Patricia Sprague. Is Patricia here this evening?
Hello?
Yep, please do.
Good evening. Kira Marchioli is unable to make it tonight, but it gives me great pleasure with Gregory Hare, Stacy Conti. Patricia Sprague, we hired her four years ago, and Mr. Hare and I were on the interview team. And as Dr. Valley always says, when we hire, make sure we hire the best. And I have to say, I know Mr. Hare, looking at him, we went round and round, we went back to the drawing board, until we found the best. And we are so fortunate to have Patricia as part of our staff. And a couple of things, I know, Kira Marchioli, certainly we talk a lot about our teachers, because ultimately, our teachers are the foundation of Lancaster School District. And the hard work and the dedication that you put in, day in and day out. Patty is a reading specialist, works in our AIS department, interventions with our students, instructionally excellent, research-based strategies. She's assumed leadership roles within the department, as well as on the ELA committee. She has a strong ability to work collaboratively within her department. She's assumed informal team leadership roles, and she advocates for piloting new programs, and readily, she seeks out and attends professional development. After Patty assumed and was appointed to the position of reading specialist, she did move into the Lancaster Central School District. And we are so fortunate to have her as part of our district, not only as an employee, but also just a member of the community, and her kids will be able to go through our community. So Patty, I know on behalf of Mr. Hare, Mrs. Conti, our William Street School, Lancaster School District, we are very fortunate, and definitely, to move from good to great, we got the right person on the bus. So, Patty Sprague.
Congratulations, Mrs. Sprague. 5.0 correspondence, we received several notices of petition pursuant to Section 708 of the Real Property Tax Law. 6.0, did anyone else from the Board receive any correspondence, by the way? 6.0, approval of minutes. 6.1, could I have a motion to accept a regular session minutes from September 17th, 2018? Second. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 7.0, items from staff organizations? Anyone from the Lancaster Administrative and Supervisory Association?
Yes.
Thank you. Lancaster Central Teachers Association? Thank you, Mr. Hirsch. Lancaster Association of Service Personnel? And anyone from Lancaster Association of Substitute Teachers? 8.0, our Board reports? Anyone from the Board have anything they'd like to report upon? Okay, we'll move to 9.0, Superintendent's Administrative Report. Dr. Valley?
Yeah, I have two things. First, we have sort of a bunch of ceremonies going on, it's Senior Night in so many athletic competitions and sports, so what happens is that the seniors are recognized, a specific contest during their season. So this Friday will be Football Senior Night, and I wanted to remind the Board of Education that they're invited to be there Friday night on the field, and recognize not only the seniors, but also their parents will be walking to the center of the football field. Additionally, $1 of the admission, we'll go to the Western New York Food Pantry, and I'd like to thank Mr. Wild and everyone involved in that donation and that organization of that event. So thank you. And I would like to mention, in the spirit of ceremonies and celebrations too, is that while the auditors' report is not exactly exciting, or, you know, it isn't like booyah, whatever, it is booyah to many people. And those people are Ms. Jamie Phillips and the Business Department, because you get a report like that, when you're talking about, to use some of their words, financial planning, positive financial stewardship and stability. It's like every year, an A-plus to them and all the things that they do in their office and at the district office, so congratulations to Ms. Phillips and everyone involved in that. Connected to that, of course, is the Board of Education, who reviews everything that goes through that office and is involved and an instrumental part of that plan. When, you know, Mr. Malachi talks about the $4 million that's done, if you go back and watch the two-hour Board meeting in October, you'll see that it was the Board of Education that came up with that plan to move different reserves and those kind of things. So it's nice for me, as superintendent, to see the Board of Education putting a plan together and see that plan come to fruition from our Assistant Superintendent in the Business Office. So an A-plus report from them, from Mr. Malachi, our third-party external auditors, and congratulations from me and from everyone involved, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Valley. 10.0 is old business, anyone have any old business they'd like to discuss? 11.0 is new business, 11.1 are personnel items. 11.1.1, could I have a motion to accept the personnel changes? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 11.2, education items. 11.2.1, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Special Educations Report? So moved. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 11.2.2, could I have a motion to accept the Committee on Preschool Special Educations Report? Any questions or comments there? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.0, business and financial items. 12.1, could I have a motion to accept the financial items? So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.2 is Policy Adoption 5660, school food service program for lunch and breakfast, could I have a motion to accept that policy?
So moved.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.3 is Policy Adoption 5662, meal charge and prohibition against meal shaming, could I have a motion to accept that policy? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.4 through 12.8 are second and first readings for 7513, medication and personal care items, 5551, allocation of Title I Part A funds in the district, 6220, temporary personnel, 7320, alcohol, tobacco, drugs, and other substances, and 6121, which is the prevention of sexual harassment of district personnel, those will appear on a future agenda for action. 12.9, does anyone have any questions about those policies, by the way? 12.9, Title II Consortium Agreement, could I have a motion to accept that agreement? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.10 is Erie One Bowses Room Rental Agreement, could I have a motion to accept that agreement? So moved. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.11 is a contract with Diego Castro, who works with our marching band, could I have a motion to accept that contract? Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 12.12 is our construction change orders, could I have a motion to accept those change orders? Second. Any other questions or comments? All those in favor? Aye. Those opposed? So moved. 13.0 is our public hearing, we have no one signed up to speak for this evening. Pardon me? Sure, go ahead. We won't call it part of the public forum, but you're welcome to, what would you like to say?
While the kids were making their presentations, I certainly didn't want to step on any of their toes, and as someone who's taught now, going into 36 years here in Lancaster, they caught so many things, and they thanked you for your support and for your time. I think there's something even greater that we have in Lancaster, and I would like to thank you for your heart, for the caring and the concern, I think it starts at your level, and it certainly comes down. I come here every day, and I continue to come here, because I know I'm cared about, not just the music program, but you, all you have to do is look at the news, or even see some other districts where that cannot be set between the Board and the Administration and the teachers. And as we are thanking our Board, and we have thanked you for your time, I'd like to thank you for the spirit that you put into Lancaster, the spirit of cooperation, and I just like to, as I said, like the old veteran, I would just like to thank you for that, because I think it's very important as well. So thank you for the example you set, and for making these buildings places where you want to come and you know you appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Klosky. 14.0, may I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss a personnel issue? So moved. So at this point, we'll move into executive session, this will effectively end our meeting. Our next meeting will be October 18th, and that's that special meeting at 5:30 at Central Avenue, special session to vote on a capital project SEQR resolution. And then our next formal meeting will be November 5th at Court Street Elementary, and that'll be a regular session meeting. Thank you for coming, everyone.